Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News reporters Robert Paris, Veris Connelly and Chris Flaherty, Juliana Mcgrane with sports and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. Thank you for joining us. Tensions were high at the recent school committee meeting over a youth risk behavior survey. The public participation portion was extensive as the room was filled with parents who expressed their frustration with the survey administered to middle school students. Let's look.
Can I have a show of hands? How many are here because of the youth risk behavior survey? Okay, so I'm going to take that first. So I think we were all pretty surprised at what came out on the youth risk behavior survey. If I were currently a parent with a sixth, seventh, eighth grader, I would be sitting in the audience with you.
This is not the first time that the opt-out has had an issue. My daughter was in eighth grade. I opted her out of all surveys. And she had a debate in her classroom with her teacher when the teacher tried to force her to take a survey. And she said, "My mother opted me out. I am not taking it." And she said, "You are taking it. Your mother did not opt you out. We have good communication with our kids. She knew very well that I did opt her out." So it is not the first time that opt-out has been an issue. I propose that instead of having opt-out, have it opted in.
I agree.
I was one of those parents who opted my kid out because as soon as I saw it, I said, "I don't want my kid taking this." And he took it. And I'm disgusted that he had to answer those questions. We're supposed to trust our school administration. I can't. I can't trust them because I don't think that they have the best interest of our children's mind. You're telling me you're part of the wellness committee that looked through all these questions and you thought that was okay? I'm not comfortable. I do not trust you to be in that position. I think you should absolutely step down.
In 2023, and I have a screenshot of it, the only definition that was missing was the piece about toys.
Really?
Yes. I mean, it's just, the questions are very leading. In particular, another one, numbers 56 and 57 about tobacco. During the past month, what flavors were your tobacco products? Number 57, during the past month, how did you get your tobacco products?
And I've never, ever seen anything like this. There are plenty of reasons to give surveys in schools. There are school climate surveys, kids' experiences within the school environment, gathering feedback on bullying, student well-being, overall safety, relationships with teachers, all of these things that would elicit valuable data that the school could use and better themselves with. I do not, under any circumstances, see the reason for these questions in this survey.
I can guarantee you that this was not calculated and intentional.
Then make it right. Make it mandatory what Jeremy just said.
We're talking about doing that, but I want to assure everyone.
But the damage is already done to our children.
I agree with you. I agree with you. Let me respond by saying it was not intentional. And the superintendent, the assistant superintendent and the principal were not aware of what was on that survey.
Then they're negligent.
Well, that could be, but they were not aware.
I understand that there may be a handful of kids that have experienced something on this survey. And the responsibility of the school is to address the well-being of every child. But for the handful that may need help, you've taken away the innocence of the hundreds that now have questions and are questioning themselves when prior to last week, they were comfortable in their own skin.
I think people have their eyes wide open. And at this point, it needs to stop. And everyone here has said that someone needs to be held accountable for whoever put this survey in front of the kids. I find it disgusting. Clearly, I'm not alone.
It's inappropriate. It should never have happened.
I really don't want to hear. My question is, I'm giving you my time. What do I tell her?
I think you have to explain the facts that you probably shouldn't have had to explain, except for this survey. And for that reason, I think there won't be a survey in the future, at least not for a long time. And if there is one, it will be very carefully vetted to make sure those types of definitions and questions are not in them.
Stop!
Please stop. We need to keep order in the meeting. I know how you feel. I know how all of you feel. Well, you're wrong. I know how every single one of you feels. I have four kids and 15 grandchildren. So don't tell me I don't understand. I get it. We will have items on our next agenda to address some of this.
Voters will not only be voting for elected officials on Election Day this Saturday, but also be weighing in on two questions on the ballot. Chris Flaherty has the details.
With the exception of the planning board and some town meeting precincts, most of the townwide races are uncontested this year. However, there are two ballot questions that are garnering a lot of attention that residents have the opportunity to vote on. The first question, should the elected town clerk position become an appointed town clerk position? The question of making the town clerk an appointed position arose when longtime clerk Amy Warfield announced her retirement. In a discussion with the select board, Warfield explained how the position has become more complex with changes in technology, election laws, and managing vital records, among other duties. There would also be an issue if no one qualified runs for the elected position. In September, Town Meeting voted to have Burlington voters decide whether or not to transition the town clerk position from elected to appointed. A yes vote would mean that you would support changing the town clerk to an appointed position. Those who support a yes vote argue that currently the only requirement for an elected town clerk is that they be a registered voter and town resident. An appointed position would allow the town to tailor the position's job qualifications and job duties to its needs, and the town would be able to choose from a much larger pool of applicants. It would be easier and faster to replace an appointed town clerk if need be. A no vote would mean that you support leaving the position as elected. Those who support a no vote argue that an elected town clerk isn't accountable to citizens of Burlington. An elected town clerk would understand Burlington intimately, including Burlington's history and key political players. An employee under the select board, an appointed clerk, would have to stand strong against potential political influence or the perception of influence. That's question one. Question two is a non-binding vote to repeal the prohibition of marijuana establishments passed by Town Meeting in 2017, shortly after the state legalized recreational use in 2016. The purpose of the vote is not to make any changes, but to simply take a temperature and allow elected bodies in town a sense of how the town feels about marijuana, eight years after the prohibition was put in place. This question first came up at a select board meeting last June where town resident Will Seagard, who runs a licensed cannabis cultivation facility in Fitchburg, asked the board to revisit the cannabis ban. The select board approved placing this non-binding question on the ballot at their January 27 meeting. A yes vote on question two would mean that you support repealing the prohibition of marijuana establishments. Those who support a yes vote argue it provides a controlled environment for selling marijuana in town, sensible restrictions and limitations that promote safety, discreteness, and taxation of illegal product. Hundreds of towns, which is 2/3 of the state, have chosen to allow regulated and licensed facilities to operate, including many right next to Burlington. The town could impose an additional tax rate up to 3% of all sales. And a no vote on question two would keep the ban on marijuana establishments in Burlington. Those who support a no vote argue that economic benefits are overhyped and uncertain, economic and social costs are ignored, pot shops are not an unavoidable outcome, the industry is poorly regulated, and availability is abundant. A Town Meeting vote would be required to repeal the prohibition, and the planning board would be responsible for the zoning. But if you haven't voted already, be sure to get to the polls at Burlington High School this Saturday, April 5. Polls are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And be sure to turn into BCAT's government channel that night for live election results and candidate interviews. That's Comcast Channel 6, Verizon Channel 41, and Astound Channel 15. Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty from the B News Election Center. Don't forget to vote.
Two long-serving planning board members who are stepping down from the board received high praise and gratitude for their service on the board and to the town at their last planning board meeting.
Two longstanding members who'll be stepping down from the board. Both of these individuals have an unwavering civic pride and, you know, a sense of public duty. They've always seen the potential in our community. Bill Gaffney, he's our current chair. He served on the ZBA and the planning board for 11 years.
Your leadership has been so welcomed and your history with the town, your knowledge with the town.
Bill, I was always impressed with your tenacity and, again, as Barbara mentioned, your attention to detail. And definitely, you're always someone who was looking for first in class. I know that with your job, you traveled a lot. So you'd always bring in a perspective from other parts of the country that was very valuable. And I learned a lot from that.
When I first came here, I saw Bill in action on sidewalks, tough as nails, defending exactly what he thought was right.
In terms of, you know, I think you have been a best-in-class planning board member. And I'm glad that you have been chair this year. And just thank you so much. And it's been an honor working with you.
So Ernie Cavino has been serving the town for 42 years.
I would learn and I would certainly hear something coming out of your mouth that I knew was in the best interest of the town. And so I would always and will always listen.
Ernie has a way of making a comment very quietly and maybe you might want to think of, or just a subtle little nudge where you know that something important is being said and you really need to pay attention.
And just knowing you in this role and as a friend, and you've been a wonderful contributor to the planning board for all these years. And I know you said to me once, you said, "All I want is someone to say..." He was a nice guy. And Ernie, you are a nice guy and you are so much more for all of us and for the town of Burlington. It wouldn't be what you see without you, with all of you in the planning board. And thank you for so much.
I'd like to thank staff. I'd like to thank Kristen as well, and my fellow board members and the residents of Burlington. It's been an honor for me to serve on the Board of Appeals as appointed and here as elected. I think you've done a terrific job. And thank you very much for working with me on that. I really appreciate it. So thank you, folks.
After six years on the Board of Appeals and 36 years on the planning board, this is my last planning board meeting. This is about, and I'm a numbers guy, so I figured it out. This is about the 720th.
Wow.
Planning board meeting. Thank you. First, to the Burlington voters who elected me to seven terms on the planning board. I hope I've measured up to your expectations. Next, thanks to my family, my three children, Ernie, Julie, and Amy. And thanks to my wife, Ruth, who passed away in 2022. She was my sounding board for many of my opinions before I would voice them at a public meeting. So you probably owe her a big... Thank you. And finally, thank you to my fellow planning board members and planning board staff. I served with all four planning directors, whose guidance is shown in how Burlington looks now. Serving on the planning board for the past 36 years has been a true honor, really.
These two seats are the only contested race on the ballot on Saturday. Thank you to both Ernie and Bill for your service. Bill will continue to serve on Town Meeting. And next week, Chris Flaherty will bring us a piece chronicling Ernie Cavino's 42 years as a public servant. Burlington Mall is expanding its offerings in 2025 with the addition of 10 new stores and restaurants. Popular jewelry store Kendra Scott is scheduled to open in late spring. Ever Eve, a clothing retailer that hires trained stylists to help you feel and look your best, will open early summer. And Pack Sun, a sustainability shop, is also coming in late spring. For a quick pick-me-up, Ten One Tea House, a premium milk and bubble tea shop, is expected to open in late spring. And the popular ice cream parlor Van Lewen is expected to arrive in midsummer. Visitors will also be able to check out the new dining pavilion additions, Tobu and Sergeant Burgers, both arriving in the summer. Previously announced Choo Choo Hot Pot is set to arrive late in the year in the left Lens Crafters Wing. And J7 Adventure Land, a new indoor play area that will feature an arcade and unique birthday party experience for kids of all age. That will arrive early summer 2025. These new arrivals will further enhance the mall's steady mix of retail, dining, and entertainment options, and more exciting developments are on the horizon. Five years ago, the mall, along with all retail, dining, and entertainment, were all closed as we were in the midst of a pandemic and an unprecedented shutdown. Here in Burlington, everyone pulled together and supported each other through such a tough and isolating time. We take a look back with another clip from our B News archives.
You never know how strong you are until being strong is the only choice you have.
I want to shout out to everyone in town, especially all the educators who are trying to stay connected to their students and families.
Business community is working harder than ever to continue to come up with innovative ways to serve our clients and our community.
We all can do our part to keep each other healthy.
I believe that we will also find a deeper appreciation for one another.
Burlington Parks and Recreation Department has taken steps necessary to secure our parks, playgrounds, courts, and fields.
Through online materials, we're doing our best to bring you entertainment.
Hang in there. Social distancing is working. Thank you for doing your part.
We can slow down the spread of this illness.
We'll get through this stronger, tougher, and closer than ever.
Everyone needs to stay healthy and stay connected.
Reach out.
We're all in this together. We'll get through this together.
Unite and support one another.
Together.
Together.
We're all in this together.
You got this, Burlington. Your care and compassion for each other will get us through to brighter days.
Spring is here, which means it is coyote pup season. Animal Control Officer Jamie Jeffrey wants to warn residents of what to expect during pup season. Coyotes have one breeding season per year that falls between January through March. Pups are born two short months later in April and May and are completely blind and deaf at birth. Coyote pups are doted upon and their vulnerability accommodated by their near constant attention of their pack. A common misconception about coyotes is that seeing them during the day is evidence that they are sick or rabid. However, in early spring and summer, coyotes simply have more mouths to feed and thus more foraging to do. Another frequent behavior that people observe in coyotes is known as escorting. Escorting is when a coyote is non-aggressively following a person on a trail. While this might be unnerving, it is likely due to the fact that someone has unknowingly wandered a bit too close to a coyote den. Seeing us as potential predators to their vulnerable pups, adult coyotes often use their own presence as a distraction tactic. How should we respond? By calmly leaving the area and giving them ample space, as we would with any wild animal. Protect your pets. While unfortunate, it's normal behavior for coyotes to attack pets like outdoor cats and unsupervised dogs. Coyotes can view cats and small dogs as a potential food source and large dogs as competition. It's your presence next to your pet that prevents such an attack. Do not supervise your pets from a distance. Pets should be on a leash under direct supervision at all times when outdoors. And remember to feed your pets indoors to avoid attracting wildlife. Burlington High School's art educator Christina Chang has been named the Gallery House Featured Artist for April 2025. A celebrated Asian-American artist, Chang is known for her bold, colorful, abstract paintings and landscapes that immerse viewers in dynamic energy and movement. Chang's work spans oil paintings reflecting her deep connection to color, texture, and expressions. As a Boston-based Chinese-Italian-American artist, Chang is celebrated for her contemporary oil paintings that transcend traditional artistic boundaries. Her art is deeply rooted in her multicultural heritage, world travels, and life experiences. Chang creates bold, colorful paintings that explore energy, movement, and emotion, bridging the gap between abstraction and landscape. Her work invites viewers into immersive spaces of color and form, drawing inspiration from both personal experiences and the natural world. The exhibition will be on view at the Gallery House in Lexington throughout April. The Burlington High School Music Department is rolling out some new classes, a film scoring class and a hip-hop history class. Veris Connelly has the story.
The Burlington High School Music Department is rolling out some new classes for the 2025 spring and fall semesters, a film scoring class, which began in the spring, and a hip-hop history class, which will launch in the fall.
So I started a class this year actually called Music Production and Film Scoring. It's really about what it is to be a music producer. So students get to join the class and they learn how to mix. They learn how to compose. We have a bunch of the leading technology that's out there right now. Students who can play an instrument can record and be successful, but people who can't also can learn how to compose and perform live using the Launchpads. So it's really a class that reaches out to everybody. If you like listening to music but don't feel like you have any musical inclination, that fits right in line with this class. If you know how to play an instrument and want to dive deeper into that, that fits with this class. It really, it's a one-size-fits-all for everybody. My students are working on a Bruce Lee clip, and for this, we wiped out all the audio. So they now have to use everything that they learned from the beginning part of the year to score music that fits that scene. Now they're also going around the school, tapping on things and trying to see what sound effects they can pull out of it and how they might be able to modify or adapt it in Logic Pro. It's really trying to provide more of an opportunity for students to connect with music outside of the traditional pathway.
We're really excited about this. This is hip-hop history. A lot of high schools around the country are incorporating this class as a way to engage and challenge students with music that they listen to and that they're consumers of, but they haven't necessarily thought about the context behind it, or they might not know the history behind it and the evolution of it. We think there's a lot of students at Burlington High School that are interested in so many types of music, and we want to make sure we're offering some broader classes that embrace that and encourage students who might not necessarily be interested in just classical performance or jazz performance.
Thank you, BEF. I mean, this whole thing wouldn't really be possible without them. This class went from something that was special and relevant to something that was more than I ever could have imagined, providing these students with the top-of-the-line education to give them this opportunity in the future.
This has been Veris Connelly from B News.
Up next is sports with Juliana Mcgrane, who has a look at how the Red Devils' spring season has started, right after your community calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey, and this is your community calendar. On April 9, from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m., Burlington Conservation will be having a vernal pool exploration at the Mill Pond Reservoir. Everyone is welcome. For more information, contact the Burlington Recreation at 781-270-1695. On April 12, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., the Burlington Community Scholarship Foundation will be having their spring fair at the BHS Cafeteria. Everyone is welcome to the event. On April 13, at 11 a.m., the Made in Burlington store will be having an Easter Bunny craft party with the furry friend himself. Everyone is welcome, and pre-registration is required. For more information, go to the website. For more community calendar events, go to bcattv.org, burlingtonpubliclibrary.org, and burlingtonrecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey, and that was your community calendar.
Hi, everyone. I'm Juliana Mcgrane, and this is your weekly sports report. We are back outside again for spring. Girls lacrosse opened the season against the Reading Rockets. We were there to catch all the action.
2025 season was underway at Varsity Field for Lady Devils Lacrosse with the Reading Rockets. Burlington got their first two goals of the day in the second quarter thanks to Ava Robatile, 11 to 2 Reading. Burlington exited the game in the fourth quarter with three more goals, leaving the field in defeat, 16 to 6 Reading.
The boys opened their season with a 3 to 14 loss against Reading on the road on the first. Daniel Hanifin, Max Lovett, and Jake Solon each scored a goal. Both of the teams will compete with Lexington on April 3. Girls on the road and boys will be at home. We'll have updates next week. Girls softball lost 2 to 4 in their season opener against Reading on April 2 at home. They will have a game against Billrica on the 4th. Updates next week. Red Devil baseball lost a very close 2 to 3 game in Reading on April 2. They will prepare for a road trip to Lexington on April 7. Red Devils volleyball had their home opener on March 28. We were there to catch all of the action.
The North Andover Knights paid a visit to Burlington for the Devs' season opener. The Knights had the Red Devils' number in the entire three sets, defeating them 25 to 9, 25 to 10, and 25 to 14, handing them their first loss of the new season.
The team is now 0 and 2 after a 1 to 3 loss to Billrica on March 31. Burlington returns home against Belmont on the 3rd. Updates next week. The Esports team are two months into their season. Let's check out how they're doing.
Esports is heading into its eighth week, and many teams are making a playoff push. Myrtle Cart is 4 and 3 this season and is ranked 5th in the state. Rocket League is also 4 and 3 this season and 6th in the state. Both teams need one win to clinch a playoff berth. Three members of the Madden team need a win to clinch postseason, Brady Richer, Brady Cossis, and Tommy Cullen. Gio Delgado is 3rd in the region and has a 6 and 1 record. He has already clinched a playoff spot as well. Richer, Cossis, and Cullen all have 4 and 3 records. Richer is 23rd in the region, Cullen is 32, and Cossis is 34th.
The Burlington High School Hockey Association will be having their 27th alumni game on April 12 at 3:30 p.m. at the Ice Palace. Everyone is welcome, and the event is free. For more info on the exciting event, go to burlingtonhockey.org/alumni. Girls and boys tennis team opened up the season against the Reading Rockets on April 2. The girls were at home and the boys were away. The ladies defeated the Rockets 3 to 2. Single match winners were Sinali Patel, Alessia Pedruzi, and Therese Kolinsky. Phoenix Mahoney and Isha Sony won in the double matches. The boys had a one-sided 4 to 1 win. Singles winners were Soham Shah, Rohan Parikh, Krish Sony, and Abhai Jamath won the doubles matches. Both teams will have their second meet against Lexington on April 7. The boys will be at home and the girls will be away. For more Red Devil action, check out our sports section at bcattv.org/sports and follow us on X at B News Sports. That's all for this week. I am Juliana Mcgrane. Back to you guys in the studio.
The highly anticipated pickleball facility is just weeks away from opening. Robert Paris has a sneak peek.
Burlington will be having their first-ever indoor all-pickleball facility at the former Planet Fitness location on Ray Avenue. There is a very unique way of how they are building it inside, and owner Jeff McGuire had the scoop.
So it's the court surface, which I mentioned, the Acrotec. It's the lighting. You can see the lighting. You can see the sound baffling in the background as well. It reduces the noise. I know that can be an issue for some. The black walls, so when the ball's flying around, you've got to be able to see the ball to play. And so you have black walls, you have black ceilings. Every court's fenced in. Every court's going to be 30 by 60, so the playing experience and moving around makes it world-class.
Get excited because the grand opening for the new spot will be held on April 19.
Come check us out. We'll have giveaways. We'll have prizes. We'll have the ability to show you around. You'll see the club. We'll be doing specific events that are going on. Vendors, we're bringing in. Really just making it a fun and exciting time for pickleball here in Burlington. It's the first Pickler north of Boston, and we're excited to be able to bring this world-class establishment.
Burlington will be the establishment's second location in Massachusetts. Their first is in Westfield.
We wanted to place the Picklers in cities and areas that everyone could get access to. And if you go north of Boston, we really thought that Burlington was a beautiful location, a great location, right off 95, you know, 20 minutes out of Boston, not too far from New Hampshire either. And so this spot here, where we're standing in, came up, and we thought it'd be a great first location for the Pickler.
From Ray Avenue, I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
Our photo of the week was sent in by Mary Leach, a frequent contributor. The herons have returned to Divine Brook Riquery, and Mary is so happy to see that they are back. We'd like to see your photos. The photos could be of something you see around town, whether outside your own door or even photos of your family, friends, and pets. Whatever you think is interesting and would like to share, send them to bcatt@bcattv.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." BCAT partnered with the Burlington Historical Commission to film a reenactment of the events in Burlington with Sam Adams and John Hancock that took place on April 19, 1775. Tad Stefanak takes us behind the scenes.
Okay, quiet, please, and action. Mr. Adams?
Ah, yes, Mr. Hancock. Thank you. That would be wonderful.
BCAT recently worked with the Burlington Historical Society on a historical reenactment of a revolutionary painting the people of Burlington have gotten to know.
You know, Mr. Revere warned us late...
You know, Mr. Revere warned us late last night, you know.
This is 250th anniversary of the start of the Revolutionary War, and we were there. Burlington was there. 250 years ago, Burlington hosted Sam Adams and John Hancock, who were hiding out from the British on April 19, the shot heard round the world.
I had my sword, and I insisted on standing my ground. You're the president of the Continental Congress, and that is where your leadership is needed the most, not as captain of militia.
The story's always been told, and we, as the Historical Commission, were talking about it, and we had written about it ourselves, and we've given lectures on it. But we said, this might be a good opportunity, having this great room at the Grandview Farm, to do a reenactment. So we contacted some actors, and we were able to put that together a couple of weeks ago. The reenactors all had their own costumes. We, the Historical Commission, had to go scouring around through the museum and then our own collections to find utensils and bowls and plates and everything to make this room look like a 18th-century home and to make it look similar to the painting that's at the museum that people are very familiar with. So we tried to duplicate that painting.
Look for the Burlington Historical Reenactment, coming to BCAT TV and bcattv.org. From the Grandview Farm, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak. And cut, and that is a wrap.
Gosh, I wish I had hair like those guys. That's all we have for this week. A little preview of what we're working on for next week. We'll have a full report on the election results, a look at Ernie Covino's 42-year career in public service, coverage of the CLA Senior Prom, and Haunted History presented by the Historical Society, and more. Thank you for joining us. Have a good week.